Get your name and your address. For everybody who may come up, please make sure you say that. Items on the -- we're going to do the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Also, appeals of decisions from the Historical Zoning Commission pursuant to the provisions of 2.68.038 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific division of the -- specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Okay. First, I'd like to get a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Motion to approve, meeting is September the 9th.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Last month's historical commission meetings are approved. Okay, first, we'll go over the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, can I request that 1216 Fifth Avenue be removed from the consent agenda, given the quorum, we might have another -- I'll have to accuse myself from that item, and if I'm not here, we can't.
Which one was that?
That's Item D, 1216 Fifth.
1216 Fifth.
Just a procedural thing.
Okay. I think we had some others that were rolling off as well.
Yes, we'll start with -- now, I guess we have four applications that will be moved off consent to new business. They include 2529 Fairfax Avenue, which is an application for new construction rear addition; 1216 Fifth Avenue, application for new construction accessory structure; 1011 Clearview Avenue, which is an application for new construction rear addition; and 1401 Dallas Avenue, which is an application for new construction rear addition. Remaining on the consent agenda is 1709 Fatherland Street, which is an application for new construction addition in the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation overlay; 1904 Shelby Avenue, new construction for an accessory structure setback reduction required, Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation overlay; 1812 Beechwood Avenue, it's new construction addition and accessory building, Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation overlay; 1313 Gartland Avenue, which is an application for new construction of an accessory structure setback reduction required, that's in the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation overlay; 1405 Dallas Avenue, it's application for new construction addition -- new construction of an accessory structure and alterations, it's Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation overlay; 3703 Meadowbrook Avenue is an application for new construction addition and ridge raise, Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation overlay; and 319 South 11th Street, it's an application for new construction rear addition and alterations, that's in the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation overlay.
Okay, any questions to staff? Would anyone in the public, based on these consent, have liked to say anything about it, that we would take these off the consent agenda? Okay, closed public hearing. Any discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda carries. Do you mind -- let me see, could you give me one more time the ones that are going -- that are -- have rolled off?
Sure, the ones that have been moved to new business are 2529 Fairfax Avenue;
Okay.
1216 Fifth Avenue; 1011 Clearview Avenue; and 1401 Dallas Avenue.
Okay, thank you for repeating that. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We will start with 2529 Fairfax Avenue.
Okay. This first item, now on new business, is an application to demolish an existing 62-square-foot rear addition and replace it with a new 920-square-foot rear addition. The demolition of that existing rear addition meets the guidelines because it is not a contributing portion of the historic structure. The new addition will have a sunroom and a master suite component. The sunroom, which I've colored yellow here on the site plan, will be behind the house and will set in from the sides of the historic house by nine feet on the left, which is the bottom, and one foot on the right. The master suite portion, in blue there, will connect to the right side of the sunroom addition 30 inches behind the rear corner of the house, and then set out 22 feet to the right, which would actually be about 13 feet beyond the outer wall of the existing side addition. Although the addition is wider than the historic house on the right side, it does not have a physical impact on the historic house because it connects to the house at the rear and not the sides, and because it is partially obscured by the existing side addition. For that reason, and because this lot is actually about one and a half times wider than the standard width of lots on this block, staff finds the addition to meet the guidelines for setback in open space. The addition also meets the setbacks required by zoning and is compatible with the rhythm of -- the rhythm of houses on the streets, also helping that fact because it's bounded on the right side by an alley. The addition will align with the -- the easy of the addition will align with those of the existing house, with the foundation line rising as grade rises towards the rear of the lot. The roof of the addition will have clipped gables, which match the form and pitch of the existing roof. The materials will be cement fiber clavoured and board and battened siding, composite roof shingles and brick, which are compatible or match those of the existing house. Existing trim and windows will be wood. Staff would request additional information on the windows, such as the mutton style or preferably the brand maker of the windows, information be provided before issuing a Other sections of the guidelines, the roofs, as I said, roof form, materials and window pattern are compatible with those of the historic house. The site plan -- there's the front elevation. The site plan also shows a paved parking area in front of the new addition, which is just to the right side -- yeah, to the right side of the existing house. Currently, there is a gravel parking pad behind the house in the location where the addition will be. Front and side yard parking is not typical of historic houses in the surrounding area, and because this new parking pad to the side of the house is being created or caused -- located there because of the addition, staff recommends that the parking be located behind the structure as opposed to in front. In conclusion, I'll stay on that side. Staff recommends approval of the application to demolish the non-contributing rear addition and construct a new rear addition with the condition that the windows and doors of the addition be approved by staff and that the parking be located behind the structure. Staff finds the application to otherwise meet all of the Hillsborough West End Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Okay, any questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Is the owner or applicant here?
Yes, I believe there's an applicant here.
Okay.
Which I'd come for. Hi, I am Michael Morosi, and I'm resident of 2529 Fairfax Avenue. Let's see, I brought with me a few pictures of neighboring houses and their parking arrangements. The houses that I've chosen are all on my street, the north side of Fairfax, which resides within the Hillsborough West End Conservation Zone, one of which, 2520 Fairfax Avenue, was a fairly recent project before the -- before this commission, which approved paved parking in the front yard of the house. And also, there is a paved driveway running alongside a neighboring house, which was also a recent addition renovation. Continuing down, I cross the street neighbors at 2708 Fairfax Park in their front yard, same with 2710. 2512 Fairfax Avenue also has a fairly recent paved front yard parking arrangement. And then I conclude with a picture of our house with kind of a Photoshop version of a car where it would be located behind our existing fence, and the profile seems to be fairly unobtrusive, especially, you know, relative to other parking situations in nearby residences.
This is still getting circulated. Any questions to the applicant?
Do you have an alley in the rear yard?
Yes, we do have a rear alley.
So you're bounded on two sides by alley?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Are any of those -- the parking that was allowed in the existing that you're showing in the pictures were existing curb cuts? They're not new curb cuts?
Well, I believe, you know, that's -- I don't know the answer to that. Looking at 2520, I would imagine that was probably a new curb cut, you know, just based on the layout of the house, and also, you know, presuming that maybe historically parking was done along their rear alley, but that's only a presumption.
Any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Public hearing, if anyone would like to speak, just please come forth. Make sure you say your name and address, too.
My name is Alan Dooley, architect. I'm working for Mike Morosi as an architect on this job. Mike bought a lot that had this alley to the side that had the parking off of it, and because he did that, it was effectively a driveway that went on his property. And in a way, he's being penalized by not being able to have this parking area. If you look at a lot of the other photos that you see, those are effective parking areas because they're driveways and you can park in your driveway. Because his was off the alley in the back, being that this is in a historic district, the back is where he needs to build his addition. So he had to get rid of that parking area. And so, this was taken off the consent agenda, saying that he had to put his parking area way back along the alley and back of the addition. Well, that'd be very inconvenient to a homeowner to have to walk 60 feet in the rain with groceries, young kids, very inconvenient. So even though we need to judge a house according to its historical properties, we need to look at the livability of the house. Having a garage way back on the back of the property is very, very inconvenient for this client. And what Mike said about the visibility of this parking area is true. It's the fence is going to screen it. It's further in the background than any driveway would be in the front of the house. So I urge you to look at the relative merits of our argument. I think we have a good argument for having this little parking area off this alley. And by the way, Commissioners, thank you for taking volunteer time to come here today. I know you volunteered time to consider these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, closed public hearing. I mean, first, do we have any more questions to staff? Was -- oh, one quick question. So Sean, the idea was to have the access off the alley? Is that what, in the back?
That's right.
Or just further down the road?
That is an alley.
Not off the alley, but just further down on that alley, or just?
Yeah, hopefully it shows on your screen, it's -- has always washed out on the overhead, but there shows a -- well, maybe it's not on this site plan, but on the floor plan, the enlarged floor plan in your packets, it shows a future garage located behind the structure that seemed like an appropriate place for parking.
So that curb cut being further down to where that park -- where future garage is?
It's not exactly a curb cut because that is from the alley, the side alley, the property is long -- has an alley at the rear and the side. I don't know if --
Future interest.
Call it a curb cut without a curb, but it's an alley access point.
And the entrance to that garage would be from the side -- the alley that the pavement or the parking is now located, but it would be further down?
It could be at the alley or from the rear alley, but--
It could be the one. Okay, I mean, there's not a plan for that right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, any other further questions to staff?
So for clarity, there is a future garage shown on the applicant's drawings, or are we assuming that there's a future garage possible?
Not to be reviewed today, but just the outline of a possible future garage is on the plans. It's not something that we've reviewed today.
Chair, so I'd like to clarify that the reason why it was pulled off the agenda is so the applicant is asking for that particular parking to be -- to stay versus--
It moved to the back, right.
As recommended by the staff.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if no more questions to staff, discussion?
Actually, I do have one more question to staff. What is -- which guideline or kind of -- can I find in the staff report where the applicable guideline for appurtenances and site work pieces are for specifics there?
I don't believe that the Hillsborough West End have a specific guideline pertaining to only appurtenances, just the ordinance in general talks about improvements.
And this body in general, you know, parking in front and side yards in historic districts is generally discouraged, and just making sure on that, thanks. Give us some further guidance.
Do we have -- since it's an alley, do we still consider it the side yard? I know we never would do it if it was a really, you know, a real street there.
I think because there's a garage and garages get filled up with things and cars, you know, I think the issue here is parking in a front or side yard, that's generally been how this body has acted on particular issues and quality of life neighborhood issue, that there are curb cuts and people park in their driveway is admittedly happens, and so I'd certainly take it under consideration in this regard, but two, I think the issue is whether we want to encourage in this case or in future cases. We have commented on unique situations, or at least by the applicant's standard, a unique situation where there was front yard parking, and I do know in this district and other districts, we have asked that those be eliminated and/or moved further behind the house, given the constraints, this is more unique than most lots in that it has an alley on two sides, so.
I think that's the only thing that makes it different, because the alley is on the other side, it's -- I kept trying to put it in the back.
And, you know, nevertheless, it is in the side yards where the parking is proposed. Side yard is a side yard.
Any other discussion?
I'll move approval with staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries as staff recommendation, with staff's recommendation. Okay, the next one is 1216 Fifth Avenue that Commissioner Binns is going to have to accuse himself?
Actually, if you could stay a little bit longer, because we still don't have a quorum for that case, so if it's all right, we'll continue, just put that off and hope that Mr. Champion, Commissioner Champion--
Even with me voting?
But do you need to recuse yourself as well?
No, no, I don't need to.
Well, if he leaves, we only have four members, so we, you know, it might be cleaner just to wait and see if Commissioner Champion arrives.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay, so the next one then is 1011 Clearview Avenue.
For this project, the applicant has agreed to all the conditions that are in the staff recommendation that would make this a -- for this project, this is side and rear addition, and it meets the design guidelines, and he's already submitted new plans, which is one of the conditions, reflecting the reduction of the side addition, with the exception of the request for the front porch. On the plans submitted to you, there are notes that the front porch addition was not under consideration, as this was the direction that the applicant provided, but since that time, they would like to come before you today and ask for it. The existing porch is a cutaway porch, a corner cutaway porch, and the applicant requests to add a new extended porch in the same location that will affect the setback and alter the look of the primary building. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions that the addition not begin before the midpoint of the house, and that the applicant submit new drawings prior to the permit being issued. Again, both of those conditions they've already agreed to. And that the front porch not be constructed unless some documentary evidence can be found, and the applicant submit roof color for the review prior to purchase and installment.
Okay, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here?
Hello, my name is Corey Lad at 1011 Clearview Avenue. We are in the process of, me and the owner as well are wanting to turn this residential house in the middle of Five Points into a commercial property, altering it a little bit to appease a -- as for business. The -- I'm open for any questions.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant?
What's it zoned right now?
UZO zone.
Okay, so it can be transferred to commercial?
Yes, it can.
Without any kind of zoning area?
It's already zoned residential and commercial, yes.
Got it, thanks.
And the reason why it's off the consent agenda is about the actual, the canopy. Do you want to elaborate anything on that?
Right now, it looks horrible. It's -- it would just give it a little bit more character, a little bit more of a historic nature. Right now, I think all three of these houses next to each other, we -- is in -- within my family's name, and, you know, as of right now, you know, I think they were built in the 1920s. They just -- it would add a little bit more character to it, a little bit more definition, and restore it back to a historic nature.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak on or for against? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I think both Secretary of Interior's guidelines by which we must operate, and certainly the guidelines specific to this district are pretty clear on adding conjectural elements without additional information being presented. This seems to be an added feature to an otherwise, you know, intact, albeit not with the siding, an intact form of a historic home, so this is further discussion. That being said, I recommend approval with staff recommendation.
That's approval with full staff recommendation.
So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that? I didn't catch it.
Anne.
Thank you.
Next one is 1401 Dallas Avenue.
1401 Dallas Avenue is an application to construct a one-story rear addition to an existing one-story contributing house. The addition also includes a side and rear covered porch. The new addition will have a footprint of approximately 680 square feet and have a roof height of 21 feet 6 inches, matching the peak height of the existing house. The foundation height will also match the existing house. Staff finds that the height and scale, as well as the roof pitches and form, meet the appropriate design guidelines. Actually, I'm going to leave that there. The right wall of the addition will step in two feet, two inches from the historic house. However, as proposed, the left side of the addition will step out four feet from the rear corner. In addition, this proportion of the addition will be covered and subsequently clip and corner the existing side gabled roof. Because the addition is not inset in the left side, which will subsequently compromise the rear corner and form of the house as well as the roof form, it is not easily removable and does not meet the standard developed to keep additions subordinate to primary buildings. Staff recommends that the addition will be required to be inset one foot on the left side. Therefore, staff finds the proposed addition does not meet the appropriate design guidelines for location. Overall, staff recommends approval with the condition the addition sit in a minimum of one feet on the left side, and staff approve final review of windows, doors, porch material, and roof color.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant present? Is this the first time staff has seen these as well, or these?
No.
Okay, so they've seen these.
We submit, if you will, during our process with staff. My name is Blaine Bonaduce, I live at 1606 Linden Avenue.
Okay.
I'm the architect for the project. So what you see before you is what we initially submitted to staff, which basically, as you can see, where we have our porch rack on our side porch, turns the corner and obscures that eve on the barge rafter that they're referring to. On the second page, which is option two, which we felt like was a reasonable compromise to their issue with the fact that this may or may not be easily removable, that point in particular, I disagree with. I think that the eve is still left intact and is discernible from the new addition. Furthermore, presently, the soffit on that gable end has been repaired a numerous amount of times, and there's, you know, plywood, which is obviously not the original, so it's even in question that that barge rafter is a historic element.
Did you just say option 3 is what you just mentioned, talked about, or option 2 is what you just discussed? Are you talking about?
Option 1 was our original submission.
Right, and option 2?
Option 2 is what we felt was a good compromise.
And then?
Option 3 was rejected as a second submission.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's an odd order, I apologize.
And has the staff received the option 2?
Yes.
Because it was originally?
Yes, it's before staff right now.
And just for the record, Blaine, maybe explain to, what is it on there, what is it part of the recommendation that you want to object to, just so we can make sure, that you, the reason why it's coming off consent agenda that you want to change? Just for the record.
Well, I think, you know, I object to them not being able to compromise with our second and final, or, I'm sorry, our third and final submission.
Okay, so it's not a specific recommendation on their list of recommendations?
No, our original submission was rejected, our second submission was rejected, and our third submission was also rejected. And I feel like the third submission, which is the second page that you have in your handout, is a reasonable compromise, which I think addresses those concerns. Specifically, that the eve will be obscured, which I feel like, as you can see in the sidewalk perspective, that it will not be obscured anymore. Given that, you know, that side porch, which just has a porch rack on the bearing rafters, and it does not turn the corner anymore, will just, will help to stabilize that barge rafter, if nothing else. There are no brackets on the house, so, you know, like a lot of these, over time, you see those start to sag. So, in some ways, it's helping to preserve that barge rafter.
Blaine, is, I guess, the crux of this argument is providing a covering over the side porch entry is kind of what this all, you know, what this all is born from? Or what the discussion is born from?
Actually, it's twofold. One is functionality, and the second is to sort of bring down that scale, you know, as you enter the building, because I know that so often on previous submissions, I've been told that that sort of two-story look immediately to the rear with the new building is not preferable. So again, I think you bring the eye down, and you bring it to a more human scale on the side, as well as create some cover for the side entry. I think it's a win-win situation.
But I certainly see your point, but it also sort of defeats the purpose of having it step in. I think this sets a precedent for others when we've asked for that section to be stepped in, and then the rear section stepped out.
It does step in. And the corner?
It does step in, but you also have created a new construction over it. I'm just, I'm so fearful of the precedents that it sets for future applications for that.
I've submitted something before in the past that actually attached to that eve in the manner which we originally submitted, and did not have an issue. I got staff approval, so the fact that there's an issue with this one particular barge rafter is somewhat confusing to me.
Well, I'm concerned that that, the porch, porch cover comes out even beyond the existing structure. That's a concern that I have.
Clarification, I guess, from staff on, there's some nuance here, I guess, to what, how the staff would respond, have responded to projects in the past. If there were a solution where the eve rafter comes down as complete, and then it appears that there's an inset, and then as the building comes back out, there's a matching on that gable end, the eve rafter is matched, it appears from the drawings, that the slope, you know, the roof is similar, so if you came across and connected that eve at that point, is that a condition with, you know, whatever the overhang, existing overhang is on the house, plus the inset, is that a condition that has been approved, or would be approval in the house? You may not be able to follow that in?
Yeah, I actually didn't quite follow you. I would say that it's been fairly standard for years to require a 1-foot inset for one-story additions, 2 for two stories. And I would like to clarify one other thing. Staff doesn't reject drawings, and it's not our place to compromise, that's what you're here for. It is up to the applicant to bring to you what they would like to bring. We do provide advice, and we do provide feedback on what we think the commission's going to approve or not approve.
I stand corrected. I was told that it was not within the recommendation.
So, I guess, with the inset, let me rephrase my question, I guess, to staff, is with, if there is a 1-foot inset of the form of the building, is a corresponding roof line also expected to inset? It seems where these, where this is pinched together, if you have, some of these historic structures have as much as a 2-foot overhang, and, you know, if the hyphen solution is 4 feet wide, you essentially have two roofs that are coming down and meeting at a valley, how would, how would one resolve that, or how has that been resolved in the past, and without looking at specific cases? Or let's say it's even 5 feet wide, and you have two eves that come down, and there's just a small, short little gap there. It creates some constructibility issues, it seems like, that would, just trying to figure out what our intent would want to be in a situation like this, or other similar situations.
I can't say exactly how it's been handled, I'm sure it's different on every case, but again, I mean, this is what we've required for years, and people have been constructing for years.
And the inset is strictly at the covered porch area that we're talking about, too. I'm kind of a little bit following you, how does, how would it resolve itself? Well, and I guess, it's not for us to figure out, but the question that I have is, you know, this project without the columns and an individually supported porch roof, which I think, and is, you're pointing out, and is troublesome, in that it can be considered as a side addition to, in one way of looking at it. Without the columns, if there still are covering over the side entry, and essentially, you know, the overall form is inset, the roof comes down and is connected over there, it still gives an overhang there for standing under an inclement weather, and I think completes that eve line shape. That's, I guess, the question that I have for the applicant, staff, and others.
Which would be another option.
Another option, yeah. Maybe? That's what I'm wondering if we've done in the past.
The specific language in the staff's report recommendation, I'm sure if I'm calling it the right thing, is that the inset on the left side, which will subsequently compromise the rear corner and form of the house, which I don't think that it does anymore with the third submittal, as well as the roof form, which I also disagree with, because it's visually discernible, and that's clear in the perspective drawing. It's not easily removable, again, I disagree. It's a couple nails, and it's a, there's a seam, and it's not obscured whatsoever. It would be clear to anybody in the future what the progression of that building is, what's old and what's new. Absolutely clear. And does not meet the standard development developed to keep additions subordinate. Again, I think it's clear that it's subordinate to that large gable side on the left side. We have inset that, the addition 2 feet.
Yeah, we understand kind of the issue, and we're trying to give staff direction, because we don't want to leave it kind of hanging out there, which is where we're headed. But, so that's why we're trying to kind of talk amongst ourselves a little bit, and I'm sorry, we were talking a little bit, but we understand your concern with it.
I'm not looking to overturn anything, I'm looking just for a compromise, you know, and I think this is a, this is a fairly surgical decision, which I think has a lot of merit.
Ben, do you mind me passing this down?
Not at all, and I'm sure to the applicant and staff, and make it part of the record, that's the question I have, is have something like that happened?
And then that portion of it would be covered, but not?
Well, sure, I mean, it certainly is a design change, and we're not here to design it for them, but that's the question I have, is that somewhere in between these two, I think it's important, it has been important that in the past, the form is completed, it's apparent, you know, the roof form is complete, and that it's, you know, something of that nature could be removed and still, and not damage the existing? We're talking about, it's a form of option 2, kind of, that we're talking about.
And it's a question, it's a question than it is a recommendation, if the applicant wants to do that.
This is a little disjointed, but I'm going to ask a question to staff here, because we're kind of going around in a circle a little bit, because we think we could give a little bit of an idea for it, but we would be, we'd have to approve it, and then you'd have to still get, work with staff based on, you know, this, whatever, whatever recommendation we can give staff to work with, give them a direction, but we, you still have to, we can't, we'd have to approve it with that condition, because there's nothing that you've presented that, or that has been given to us, that we can prove today, so we'd have to give it with a condition.
I guess the situation that we're sitting in is that we either approve it or disapprove, act on it as submitted, as you submitted it, or ask for a deferral, if you, to see if you all can?
Work through it.
Work through it, but, I mean, I think?
No advantage to me to defer, I just assume, have a decision.
Okay, all right.
Well, then, based on, well, we'd have to, we'd have to, obviously, go by what we see here, what's been submitted, then. Did that circulate to staff?
Yeah.
Okay. And so my question stands, is that something, you see the difference between the overhang and that condition, I can't recall, but I don't, I don't make mental note of enough of these, and memorize how we go about that, as to the inset not matching, you know, that the overhang match at the eve, but, and also not inset, is my question. And no columns, right, was just?
Yeah. That it would be, it would be supported by, structurally, could be supported on its own.
A cantilever.
And on the floor plan, there'd be, there is, it's still somewhat covered. The part of the porch is somewhat covered.
A question, not a, not a recommendation.
I guess since we're moving it all around, maybe let the applicant look at it, too, it's right there.
Well, you know, one of our options is to put an awning, because those aren't, you know, fabric awning, because they're easily removable. I don't consider that to be any more responsible than what I proposed before you. But we have every right to do that, I guess.
Okay, I think I have to tell us, we have to just go by what we've been presented here, and make a decision, and if there's any guidance we want to give to staff from it, we can, but we have to go by what we've, what we've been submitted. And what's been submitted on record, are these options, they're not, they're actually, since he's given it, they're part of the record, right, even though you guys have, because you guys have reviewed it in the past, correct?
I don't, yes, we have.
Okay. Okay. I think we got through everything. Do we have a motion or any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
Just one note, the public hearing has, is still open.
Oh, okay, you're right.
And then also, we need to see if there's anybody else that may need to speak.
Thank you, thank you very much. You've been up here, I hadn't even thought about that. Okay, thank you, sir, appreciably. Is anyone from the public who would like to speak before or against this project? Okay, closed public hearing, thank you. Okay, because we've gotten so much into discussion, so I'll open up one more time, do we have some discussion, or any more questions? Commissioner Nielsen, just to be, well, further, I guess, further clarification from the staff, is the side porch, you consider that a side addition? I think the applicant kind of pointed out, there were some issues that staff pointed out with the roof, and the porch is added, I think, obviously for access, which makes sense, and is something that we've done before, that there are columns that come down and are outside of the existing edge of the house, is that? I don't see that as one of the comments on the staff's recommendation, but I think it ties into this whole issue of how the roof line resolves itself, and this side porch.
Correct me if I'm not really answering this question. It's not really a side addition, because it's not attached to the side of the existing house.
Okay.
But it's a portion of the rear addition. And our understanding, in the past, the commission has always required those insets. So the fact that it's a porch, or not a porch, has nothing to do with it. It's the fact that that addition isn't really inset that foot, and so then that corner, and that corner roof line is covered a little bit, and so that original form of the house is not as evident. And that was one of the reasons that those insets have always been required, to maintain that form. Did that answer the question?
It does. My next question would be, if the roof form were maintained, and the porch covering were separate and apart from interrupting, interrupting the historic roof form, would the staff's recommendation be any different?
If the porch were moved down, the wall of the addition, so it were like in the middle of the addition, or towards the back of the addition, that would be a different thing. The fact that it's on that corner, and again, it's not that it's a porch, it's that the addition is on the corner, and that inset is not, that has always, from what we understood, has always been required, is not held.
And so, if the, if the roof line were resolved on the historic house, and returned back to the inset that exists, and the porch roof were independent of that, by some inches, some feet, any amount, would that be, would that meet the guidelines?
Right, if it were not on the corner, I'd have to review the guidelines, we have specific guidelines for when the addition comes out beyond the sidewalks of the house, so I'd have to look at that.
That being my point, because the, you know, the next question becomes, if you can resolve the roof, the columns, are they an addition, does that, does that?
And it's not just the roof, but it's that corner.
Right.
It's that wall as well.
Right. What the?
Holding that full corner from foundation to roof?
Right.
Is what helps maintain that form.
And so the porch floor itself is also part of your, part of the staff's comments, and part of the dilemma that we find here?
The entire addition, whatever it is, a porch, or a wall, or whatever it is, hugging that corner is what we were recommending disapproval of.
Okay. That provides clarity. Thanks.
Just to clarify for me, please, according to our map, this house doesn't sit on the corner, but we have a sidewalk perspective. What's the nature of the context around it, on the side where this addition is proposed?
This wasn't my case, so I'll let Ms. Taylor answer that. It's actually just the side yard, there is a house adjacent.
Is there a sidewalk, per se, or just a side yard?
There's just?
Is there any concrete, or is it just vegetation?
I'm sorry, it's not on the site plan, I actually?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, I got your question. Yeah, just in front, I think it's just in front. By looking at, I'm looking at this whole plan.
Me, too.
There's a picture of it, up on your screen now, should...
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, any more discussion or questions?
Yeah, I mean, that the addition sets in a foot on one-story homes is, you know, we've done it, staff's done that, and required that for a long time, and I think in this case, I'm, and that the roof maintains its original form is apparent and very clear in the guidelines. The question here is, that I'm wrestling with, is that, all those things aside, it strikes me that any, what the applicant has submitted, both from, which wasn't initially clear, both from the standpoint that whether it be a deck, or poured concrete floor, or anything, is coming out beyond the existing sidewalk of the house, seems to be the objection from the staff's standpoint. And so, that's what I wanted to be clear, because I think as we provide some leeway, whether it's an approval or disapproval, or whatever it is, that understanding exactly, and giving staff some guidance, or ourselves being very clear on what that is, and what that isn't, is what we need to do in this case, so.
Well, suppose if we go along with staff, if we were to go with a staff recommendation, we need to give them some guidance as to what he could submit that would be acceptable.
Well, if we, yeah, if we changed it, if we changed it. Okay, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll move to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay, all in favors, signify by aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, so ayes carried, okay, kind of counting, okay. Okay, so motion carries, the, just to recap, the staff recommendation was for an approval with the recommendation summary of, with the setting in, with the, he's got my thing now, but the setting in of the one foot, I'm sorry, with the addition set in a minimum one foot on each side, and that the staff provide final review of windows, doors, porch, and steps. Just wanted to restate that, since we kind of talked about it for a while. Okay, so now we will go back to the one where Ben needs to recuse himself, 1216 Fifth Avenue.
1216 Fifth Avenue is an application for new construction of an accessory building, Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The project is to construct a two-story rear accessory structure. The accessory structure will not require a reduction in base zoning requirements. The structure will be located at the rear of the property with its garage doors facing the alley. The structure is proposed to sit 20 feet from the rear property line of the alley, based on any requirements, as I said before, are all met. Staff finds the location of the proposed accessory building to meet all appropriate guidelines for location and setback. The accessory structure will be 24 feet wide at its widest point. It will be 30 feet deep. By contrast, the historic house is approximately 23 feet wide and approximately 43 feet deep. Even though the accessory structure will be approximately one foot wider than the existing house, the structure will likely never be seen from the public thoroughfare because of the setting, because of the siding of the historic house. The accessory structure will remain subordinate to the historic house because it is much shallower than the historic house, and because it is located so close to the alley. Staff finds that the height and scale of the proposed structure meets all appropriate guidelines.
Just one note, too, for commissioners, just in case, this, this is Ben's project, so that's why he pulled it off, just so there will be no conflict of interest, so. Any, go ahead.
Well, I think another clarification is that it was pulled off because we didn't have a quorum for it to be voted on as consent agenda.
It was delayed, it was delayed, not, it was pulled off consent because the applicant, which was Ben, pulled it off. We just delayed it till we had a quorum to vote on it.
Right. But it was pulled off because if he had had to leave the room, we wouldn't have had quorum. There are no other issues involved with this one. As far as I know, the applicant is not, agrees to all the conditions, and we're all good with this one.
And that's just how I was going to finalize. Staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions that staff review and approve the window specifications and design of pedestrian and vehicle doors and design, and designs prior to installation, as normal.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the public want to speak on, or behalf, for, against this project? Okay, closed public hearing.
Move to fruit.
Have a second?
Second, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, if someone will go get Ben for us. The next one, starting on the new business, is 1408 Woodland Street.
And in April of this year, the MHCC approved a two-story house that was recently completed. This image shows the house under construction. The applicant now proposes a two-story garage. These are the side and rear elevations. The project meets the design guidelines in terms of roof shape, materials, design details, locations, setbacks, and rhythm of openings. However, it does not meet the design guidelines in terms of height and scale. The proposed garage is not subordinate to the primary dwelling, in that the height and width is similar to the primary house. It is proposed to be approximately 28 feet tall on the street side, front-facing side, and 29 feet on the alley side, compared to the primary building, which is 29 feet tall on the street side. The width is 30 feet, which is exactly the same as the primary dwelling. Because of the drop in grade, the accessory building will appear to be below the height of the existing building. However, the overall mass of the building is not subordinate to the primary, and it's not in keeping with historic surrounding accessory buildings. The guidelines require that new outbuildings be compatible in terms of height and scale with the surrounding accessory structures. The majority of accessory buildings in the immediate context are one-story. A study of historic outbuildings in the Lachlan Springs East End neighborhood completed in 2008 revealed that there are no historic buildings more than 24 feet tall, and approximately only 5% were two-stories, with an average footprint of about 250 square feet, the largest footprint being 576 square feet. The combination of the large footprint, and the height, and the width, that essentially the same as the two-story primary building, results in a massing that does not meet sections 2B8A. Staff recommends disapproval, finding that the height, massing, and scale of the proposed garage to be inappropriate for the context. Because dropping the height will significantly alter the overall design of the building, staff is not simply recommending conditions for approval, but is recommending a full disapproval. Disapproval will not prevent the applicant from returning to the commission with a new design, or designing a new building that falls within staff's ability to review. And the applicants are here, if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lynn Taylor, the residential designer, and just want to clarify, the grade drop from the front sidewalk, which is where visibility is counted, it's nine feet to the front, the very front gable of that garage, nine feet drop, okay? And then, in regards to the staff talking about the massing, this design is broken up into two gables, one gable to the left, and I'm talking about looking at the front of the garage, which is the visible part from the street, possibly. The front gable is a separate bearing than a side gable, so it's like, very similar to this right here, except just a smaller square footage. So I feel like the massing is broken up, as a matter of fact, this staff, the staff and commissioners over the years have approved bigger boxes. I've got a list of addresses, but, you know, 1300 Edgewood Place, 1203 Woodland, 1619 Russell, 1422 Gartland is a 33-foot, 4-inch by 26-inch box with a loft. It's 867 square feet on the footprint. Our footprint is 696. You just approved a two-story that I believe is one foot wider than the primary structure, and ours, I believe, is the same width as the house. So it's not like the footprint is any larger than what you've approved. The massing and the scale, it is broken up. I think the real issue here is the height. And my client did try to talk to staff, and, you know, he was taking care of staff and building codes, and they kept deferring him back to the commission, the staff. And he couldn't really get a clear answer about the maximum height of this accessory garage building, and the word subordinate. But to me, subordinate is, you know, a lower building, and then the massing also, that has got to be broken up. And I think this is broken up better than a box, a 30 by 36 box, or whatever box you're looking at. And also, too, June in 2011, you approved a garage at 1917 Russell. It's a two-story, the recommendations called it a two-story. It's a two-story in the back, I believe, a one and a half story maybe in the front. The footprint is almost exactly like this. It's 24 deep by 32 wide. I mean, it's almost the same footprint. And my client has a really hard time understanding why this footprint is called very large in the recommendations, and massive, and these others aren't. So he needs some clarification on this. We're willing to, today, accept a lower ridge height. Again, it's from the sidewalk, and I have a survey here with the grades on it. We got the grades on this, so we have a survey. Nine feet from the front street to the front of the garage, that's quite a bit. So even if the, even if the ridge is at, now, we're just talking about one ridge, we're talking about the front-facing ridge, the side ridge drops down. I can't give you that exact number, it's between 18 inches and 24 inches, but anyway, so we're just talking about the front-facing width of this is the tallest part of it, just like on the front house you're seeing right here. And if you look at that, I mean, I mean, I think that's a broken-up mass there, it's not one big box. And so we disagree that the massing is too large, and the square footage is very similar to other things. If we have to reduce the height, we will, 25 or 26 feet to that top ridge on the front-facing gable, and naturally, the left side's going to drop down some, too. He's trying to make some things work with storage and workshops, and children areas, and things like that. But we don't want a full disapproval. This puts him off another month, this is time and money, and he, I believe he's tried to work with the staff. It's partly, he, you know, is new at this kind of thing. And also, too, if we have to reduce it down three or four feet, we've already looked at how we can make that work inside. So it's not like we have to redesign it. Pretty much, the windows and doors are going to stay the same and just come down, but we would like an approval on the ridge height. If you're, you're okay with the footprint, which I can remind you is like other footprints in the neighborhood, and then we can go ahead and proceed with construction drawings.
So that, you're, you're, you're willing to lower it three to four feet?
Yes, we are.
Do you, just a question, too, the ridge, since the slope goes down at the backside of it, what we're looking at, do you happen to know, like, how distant from that, if it drops nine feet, looking at the survey, approximately, I know it's just a guess, but...
The double front doors on the drawing to the front sidewalk is nine feet. I mean, I've got the great, existing grade lines, what the property is.
Oh, so, okay, so it'll be the same, okay.
But now, it continues to drop, and it has actually pulled 18 feet from the alley, so it's not going to overwhelm the alley, like some of these garages that are two-story or one and a half stories, they're just shoved right up against it. Technically, it's under 700 square feet, so I think he could pull it 10 feet from the alley, but he wanted to get it away from the alley.
Any questions, any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thanks, Lynn. Would anyone like to speak for, against the project?
Hey, my name's Drew Sloss, 708 Porter Road. I'll be the contractor on this job. When we started looking at doing a garage, because we have a full two-story, we knew that we wanted to carry that character into the accessory building. And when I called staff to discuss what subordinate means in terms of height, because the, this is also related in the UZO, which has a 16-foot knee-wall height, with a height not to exceed the primary structure, I said, you know, is that what we're working with? And the discussion was like, no, that, the UZO is subordinate to what the guidelines say, and the guidelines don't actually have a specific set height. They talk about rhythm and spacing, and so what we try to do is, okay, now, well, let's look at the topography, and the topography drops nine feet. So even if you build a garage theoretically the exact same height as the house, my, my understanding is if you look at an elevation, and the ridgeline of the primary structure comes off, and you come down nine feet to a similar-sized accessory structure, it is subordinate. And that's where we had, so I tried to have that conversation, and I know that, that there's this fine line of giving sets, specific heights, not wanting to do that, because it does maybe squash some creativity, but at the same time, before you go and spend money on the design side, it'd be helpful to have some help. So I'm happy to, to reduce the height of this. We were trying to accommodate some desires for the inside utilization, but I think we can accomplish those with some slight reworking of the inside at 26 feet, or 25. I would really request that we don't have to come back in a month and go through the same thing. If we could get approved today, that'd be amazing. Thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else? So you're actually with the applicant. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for, against? Okay, I'm in a closed public hearing, discussion.
Well, I think as it relates to being subordinate to the primary structure, there is an argument that you're taking advantage of the grade, and I do think that that's, that's meaningful, but it's, that's just one piece of it, and the guidelines also provide that it needs to be compatible in terms of height, scale, et cetera, with surrounding buildings. So I think if it's, what, 28, 29 feet tall, that is taller than most of the houses in the area, let alone garages. I think it's just too tall, and I do appreciate the desire also to get something done today. So I think if, in my mind, if we can lower it three or four feet, I think that gets us pretty close to something that everybody can live with. Otherwise, the footprint looked fine to me.
Does the footprint of this meets the, it wasn't specifically mentioned here, so I'm assuming the footprint of this meets our approved guidelines for, in historic districts, I think 750 is the mark?
Well, one of the reasons that we, you know, it's difficult to give a number on height, is because all of those things are connected. The footprint, the square footage, the width, the height, they're all connected. An appropriate height for a one-story, or a garage that has a 400-square-foot footprint, is going to be different than the appropriate height for a garage with a 700-square-foot footprint. So, you know, as I'm sure you all know, because you've been doing this for a while, that's the reason we can't give hard and fast numbers, that the footprint is right, can't, don't know if the footprint is right till we know what the height is, don't know if the height is right till we know what the footprint is, you know, what the width is. So again, our concern was that the width is the same as the house.
Okay. So, but, well, and here it is, 696 is, is within the square footage requirements of that, of guidelines passed.
Of bulk zoning.
Yeah, bulk zoning.
Yeah, I think with, especially with the slope, and then the extra three or four feet, it would definitely really go, seem subordinate. You know, potentially, too, if you lost on three or four feet, that means you might lose six or seven stringers, you know, risers, too, so you might even could do something even more with the stairs. Okay, any more discussion?
The, and it, now, as measured in the existing houses, from its most widest, or in its, at its most widest, measures 34 feet.
know, risers too. So you might even could do something even more with the stairs.
Any more discussion?
The, and it, now, as measured in the existing houses, from its most widest, or in its, at its most widest, measures 34 feet. Staff's, I guess, relying on the frontmost part of the elevation for that equivalency?
That's correct. And again, we were looking at all the measurements together.
Right.
We weren't separating any out.
Sure.
I would move to approve under what staff's condition, conditions, in addition to lowering the structure four feet.
Okay. And I don't think, the staff didn't have condition for this one, because they just recommended a disapproval?
Oh, sorry. So I thought there was more specifics.
So I think we...
I guess, I, my motion is then to approve with the condition that they lower it four feet.
Okay. So a second on the revised motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion, does, motion carries for approval with the condition that you will lower it for four feet. Okay, 1611 Fatherland.
This building recently received...
Sorry, 1611 Fatherland. We took another look at that and realized that it could be approved at the staff level, so a permit has been issued.
Thank you. I wasn't listening.
Say it one more time. Was it on the consent agenda?
No, the next one was approved by staff.
Okay.
So if we could, we will move to 1112 Forest.
Okay.
And this building recently received a permit for an addition, but once they started renovation, realized that there was extensive termite and fire damage, and so request to demolish the building. There's more detailed information about this in the engineer's report that's attached to your staff recommendation. Since the existing residential building is contributing to the National Register of Historic Places District, and the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, demolition does not meet the design guidelines. However, when applying the standards for economic hardship, staff finds the project does meet the guidelines for appropriate demolition. The existing portion of the house with a previous rear portion already removed, and including the stairs, a second level, and the front porch, 650 square feet. The applicant purchased the property for $191,700, and estimates that it will be about $90,000 to take the necessary, to make the necessary repairs, not evident at the time of purchase, and bring the building up to the standards enforced by Metro Department of Codes and Building Safety. Staff has reviewed existing conditions three different times, since the removal of siding and flooring, which has allowed us to see the structure very well, and agrees with the cost estimates for repair and rehab, based on an extensive amount of termite and fire damage to critical elements such as the sill and the load-bearing interior walls. Based on recent sales in Lachlan Springs, staff finds that small homes are valued at about 150 to 190 per square foot. So the value per square foot would be a maximum of about 190, and the cost with these numbers would be about 441. The applicant will likely return to the commission with plans for a new structure. But because they were spending all their time trying to work with us and find other solutions, they didn't have time to put together a new scenario to bring to you today. Staff recommends approval of demolition based on economic hardship created with a cost to repair that far outweighs the potential value. Demolition meets Section 4B2C of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines. And I just wanted to note that this is a fairly quick presentation, so I don't want anyone to think that we came to this lightly. There were, as I said, multiple reviews of the building, multiple meetings, both the applicant and staff worked very hard to find other solutions. So I just don't want you to think that we came to this lightly. And I'm sure the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come before the commission?
Good afternoon. My name is David Baird. I'm the architect and working with the applicant. As Robin said, we originally had an approved design for an addition to the existing house. And once demolition started on the modern additions to the existing house, it was soon discovered that pretty much every single structure, wall structures, roof structures, foundation structures, floor structures, the majority of those were eaten by termites. And so demolition and construction stopped until we looked at it several times. We had a structural engineer look at all of the pieces of the house and made a report that's in, in the findings that you have. Also, there's some photographs in there. The, originally the house looked like it was in great shape before we started taking all of the finishes off of all of the structure, because we were going to put all of the finishes on. But it was soon discovered that, that pretty, I would, I would say 60 to maybe 70% of all wood, single members, had termite damage. And so we stopped, and the owner tried to apply some numbers to what it would cost by getting the contractors in there and figuring out how much it would cost to replace all the members. And with that, I think it ended up at about $90,000 just to replace the, the, the structure. And that's not including foundation work. Like a lot of houses in the area, the foundation is cedar post and, and piers. And, you know, a lot of new renovations, you just keep that. So that's not factored into it as well. But what the owner would like to do because of the financial hardship is, is demolish the existing structure, which is about 650 square feet that's, that's left, that's original, and come back to the, to the staff and recommend new construction. And we made a decision not to rush the new design. The owner has a history of, of doing renovations, and he would like to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you with the applicant as well?
Tim Wesley, 1400 Rosa Parks Nashville. I am the owner and have nothing to add but available for questions.
Thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against the project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
Approve demolition?
Second?
So I just have just some questions. And what I worry about in this situation is that we, with, and I know Robin said that they've looked at this hard, and it's not taken lightly. What I worry about is setting a precedent where there's really no incentive to inspect it, because you come in, if it ends up being fine, you continue on. If you find trouble, you can demolish it. And so I would just like to hear from the applicant to what they did on the front end, because it sounds like it's in pretty tough shape. But it's the most, in my mind, the most basic things that a structural engineer would look at if they were inspecting a house. Maybe there were barriers to inspection that it wasn't easy, it wasn't readily, it wasn't easy to get at. Maybe that's the answer. But given the purchase price, it seems like that the $90,000 that it would take to save this house left with the seller. And that would have been something, had you known that, you would go back and negotiate it. So I worry about letting our dollars that would otherwise save this house leave with sellers if we don't have some kind of mechanism for encouraging the applicant to do a lot of due diligence, especially on these older homes.
Okay. Robin, would you want to just kind of summarize, maybe the steps that they went through, or do you want me to ask applicant?
That was part of their purchase. We weren't involved with that at all. I would recommend that you...
Oh, I mean the inspection since then. Is that what you're looking for?
Oh, I believe he's talking about the inspection at the time of purchase.
Prior to sale, because...
Oh, prior to sale.
My concern is that if we allow demolition in these circumstances, there isn't a meaningful incentive for the owner, the buyer, to even look at it, because they've got a hedge. It either turns out that the property's in great condition, they go on with the renovation, or if there's a problem, they'll just demolish it. Whereas if there was a different incentive that the buyer would say, okay, you need to look at this and negotiate with the seller to drive the price down, so there are dollars to save the house. And I worry that the precedent that we have and the mechanism we have encourage the former rather than the latter. I don't know what the solution is, but I guess I'd like to, if people have ideas about what we could do.
Well, I, only thing I can say is for past, I mean, I mean, we can't, obviously, we don't, we can't deal until the applicant comes with what they've done. And there is a, and Robin hinted at it, but for past projects, it is a very tedious thing to go through to make sure that they have, that that, that it really is unsalvageable, or what, or what parts are, because there's some, some areas that we will, will still require that they keep certain portions of it. So there is, staff has a pretty rigorous thing, rigorous step-by-step that they really are looking for to make sure that they meet those. So it's, if people are, there's a lot of deterrence to go into it. We, we don't, we rarely approve demolitions, actually. And it has to be a big cause for it. So I don't think we can, I think it's a good point to bring up, and we're putting it on record now, that, you know, we definitely want to make sure we always encourage our applicants to, to look at what they've got first, and to make sure before they purchase it, and try everything. And it looks like this applicant actually did try hard to keep the building initially, and actually got into demolition before they brought it back to staff.
Did I hear you say that staff had done several, I mean, been back several times when they removed some of the, more, more of the, the finishes and everything? That you did go back and take a look?
Actually, our first inspection was when everything had been removed, and we, but we kept going back just to, to look. But I believe, you want to jump in?
I was just going to say, there's a motion on the floor, and there needs to be a second before discussion. I didn't want to interrupt you guys.
That's okay, that's okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. And then, so, and we've had our, we're doing discussion?
I'm fine with the discussion. I just, I think we need to keep thinking about ways to encourage a different result.
Commissioner Colley, I think I hear the nuance of, I feel like I hear the nuance of your argument, which is, and, and I feel like those folks who've come before us on this certainly doesn't, I can't speak for the applicants.
I don't think this is the one.
Right. But, but if, if there were a predatory, you know, person in, in the neighborhood, this might be, albeit a, maybe a roundabout scheme, but certainly a scheme by which more could be had from, from, from lots in a historic district. And so certainly, I think, due diligence is always, is always in order, especially in, in historic districts.
We've certainly seen that. We have, people have purchased structures and started demolishing them before we got to take a look at them. And it's, we've been rounding around with that.
Mm-hmm.
And staff doesn't, I've tried to make sure that we're not destroying something that's...
Call for a question? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries to approve demolition. So the next one is 1520 Woodland Street?
In this spot right here at 1520 Woodland, there's a dining area, and the applicant is proposing to cover this area and provide temporary plastic sides so that it can be fully open air in good weather, but still usable space in poor weather. The application meets the design guidelines in terms of location, setback, height, scale, and reform. This application is not on the consent agenda because it's providing a more defined approach to allowing for plastic-sided additions, if you approve. And in the past, we've received applications for plastic-sided additions to primary facades and street-facing sides that have been denied. In this case, the applicant proposes a more permanent front to the street-facing side. The front section will be glass wall panels with a finish that matches the existing storefront, a wood screen, and a canvas-covered roof on a steel frame. Anticipating future requests for this type of thing, staff recommends allowing for plastic roll-up sides on commercial buildings with the following conditions: that it's located on the ground level of a secondary facade, that it not be on a street-facing facade, for like a corner building, that it have a permanent glass wall on the portion of the addition which faces the street, and that the front sit back a minimum of three feet from the front wall, or the sidewall, depending on where it's located. The reason for these conditions is to allow for the minimal and open additions that provide temporary cover, and discourage more permanent additions that have a greater visual impact on the building, while still minimizing the impact of an inappropriate material like plastic. Staff recommends approval of the project, finding it to meet Section 2B of the design guidelines. And the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Any questions to staff?
I do have a question for staff. I noted on the staff recommendation that this project would provide guidance for future similar requests.
That's right.
And I know that our conversations have been to set precedents for future projects. So does this imply that this is a first presentation of this nature in general, or just to the overlay of Lachlan Springs?
Of this specific design, it is the first. Now, we certainly have had people come to us and ask for this type of thing on the front of a building, or on the street-facing side of a building, and that has been denied. And so for a while, they were just thinking we were headed towards that direction of just denying wholesale. But once this plan was brought to us, we realized that this would work, that it minimizes the view of the plastic, and it, it opens up opportunity for other businesses too.
And this is a street-level only?
Street-level only.
Street-level, okay. Thank you.
And it's on the non-street side?
Street-level but non-street.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come before and speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Jamie Holland, on behalf of the applicant, would just ask that, you know, don't have anything to add to that, just ask that it be approved as submitted. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'll be here.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Open public hearing. Is anyone in the audience like to speak for or against?
Good afternoon. My name is Hans Schmitz. I'm president of Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association. I live on Gartland Avenue. We, I just want, our board has reviewed these plans. Mr. Holland was kind enough to come to our, one of our board meetings, showed the plans. They were reviewed by the board of the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association, including the zoning and codes subcommittee chair. We found them to be no objection to them, and we would recommend or encourage your approval of those drawings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closed public hearing. Any discussion?
I'm going to adopt staff recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 24th Avenue.
I believe next on the agenda is 321 South 11. Am I right?
Is, is this one of ones that was removed, 24th Avenue?
I'm so sorry. I have my notes out of order.
It was.
Sorry, I'm missing some of my notes. Give me just a second. This is one we've been through before. This is a project that you have seen before. And it's a little bit different than what you saw before. And I'll just cover how it's different from the last submission. The height and width is the same, however the U-shaped or piano box form, that, and I'm not sure they're on there. I may have, in messing up my notes, may have not put it there either, but you could please look. The height and width are the same, however the U-shaped or piano box form that is not evident on a two-story building, and the overlay has been replaced with a more appropriate form for the district. The new form also de-emphasizes the height with a one and one-half story house massing, as opposed to the two and one-half story house that originally proposed. It meets all the guidelines, all the other guidelines as it did last time in terms of materials and setbacks and so forth. So staff recommends approval with the condition that staff provide final review of windows, doors, brick, location of HVAC, and roof color, and that the front dormer sit off the wall by two feet. Staff finds that the project meets Section 2B of the design guidelines for new construction in the Hillsborough West End neighborhood. And the applicants are here if you have any questions.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come before and speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard World Architects. I hope we're talking about Fairfax, because that's not what was...
Yeah, we're with you.
Yeah, we're with you.
Okay. I'm a little confused.
It's this, it's this one.
So we're back again this month. So we're looking at something totally different up here. I'm not looking at my project. I'm looking at 11th Street. And I didn't bring my pictures, because usually it's a waste of time.
That's okay. I think we all have it. Does everybody have this one?
Okay.
I'm with you, yep.
Okay.
Okay. We, given the fact that our house was not approved last month, we took special care to make sure we weren't wasting any more resources this month and made a couple of visits with staff, emailed several things, and were under the impression until yesterday, reading the comments online, that the house was approved. The little dormer thing may seem like a small detail. It's a fairly critical aspect of the design. I guess we're going to have to pass this around. I've always got to have a backup plan. Sitting a dormer two feet back would really alter the plan. It would put the dormers about seven feet off the floor. I've included some photographs, most of those taken on Fairfax, with dormers that are not two feet behind the front wall, in some cases even out in front of the front wall. I live in one of those houses, not on Fairfax, where my dormer extends almost three-quarters of the way across the front porch. So we were a little baffled by the comment and do not concur.
Robin, I'm sorry, with that one of the, maybe, maybe I don't have the right one because what the, my recommendation summary says approval with condition that staff approve final review of windows, doors, roof, color, and location of utilities. Am I looking at the right one?
It's 2403. 2403 Fairfax.
Okay. So it's not the 20, okay. All right. I'm with you. I've been looking at the wrong one myself, so, okay.
So I think there was some confusion with staff in terms of what we were, what we had agreed to do. And I take witnesses with me to these meetings. I don't base it all on what I recall, especially in light of all the difficulty we've had getting to this point. So we would not like to move the dormer back two feet. It is currently sitting six inches off the front face.
Okay.
Michael, can you verify which elevation you're referring to when you talk about that dormer?
The photograph I gave you, these aren't our house, these are other houses on the street. Well, yeah, we're talking about the one over the front door, but they're both in the same location. We took a very methodical, step-by-step process with this house, trying to design it within what staff would approve. I won't say it's a very creative process, but I think we will get the house built this way.
Okay. And that's your, that's your only concern is the, is the dormer?
Right. The surprise about the dormer is something we're not in a position to agree to do today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions to the applicant? I think for now, we don't have any. After we discuss, we'll see if we have any more.
I'm going to be right here.
Okay. Okay. Open public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of this project?
I can add some clarification just so that we're, so that we're all on the same page. I certainly apologize, this was a surprise. On September 10th, I sent an email that said, "The commission typically asks that dormers to be set off the ridge and the walls by two feet." And that was sent to Mr. Ward, his associate, the two applicants, and the developer. So when, so this, when this came through, I thought it was simply their desire to ask you for it.
Sure.
That was for the house last month, and we did pull it down off the ridge two feet. The point about it being off the front wall does not in respect.
Yep.
The note about it being off the front wall, I mean, I threw everything out in regards to the last house. We started a clean sheet of paper, so I didn't go back and check emails in terms of what sort of rules we were under. So granted, that may have been there, but I wasn't looking for that. And like I said, there's plenty of, of good, honest history of dormers that do not sit two feet back, that, and I couldn't find it in the guidelines anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any, any questions to staff or, first, let me close public hearing. Discussion?
I think historically, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think a lot of times when we see applications and we've got dormers that sit somewhere flush or somewhere in between flush or set back or on houses with, to me, this is a question of form and how intelligible that is in the third dimension. And a lot of times, oftentimes what we'll see, something that is out of proportion or interrupts the rhythm is, has a very short portion of the roof and it's almost an add-on in that the eve carries all the way across the front and it just looks faked in. I think from these, in my opinion, from these elevations, because of the extensive roof overhang and the slope of this roof, that doesn't seem to read in this case. And that's, that's just my opinion about the design of this particular home.
Yeah, it wasn't privy to the last month's discussion, which was a different house, but kind of, I felt the same way just first looking at it, the right one, that seems like it. But we don't want to set a precedent, I don't know, but at the same time, it does seem like these are a little bit different for the form.
Robin, have we made exceptions to that, that guidance in the past in situations like this where there's maybe an unusually large overhang that does mitigate some of the concerns about putting them on the main wall?
Not that I'm aware of for primary elevations for the front, just odds.
Any more discussion?
I just want to weigh in here about the roof overhang, although it may not be set back two feet from the wall. I believe that the overhang does mitigate it and that we, I think we're accomplishing what we set out to do with the form of this house. That's all I have to say.
Michael, am I going to motion?
Motion approved.
Oh. Okay. Do I have a second?
Well, that would be, we need to clarify.
Yeah, you need to clarify what it is that you are, you're making the motion but with the following difference than what the motion sets out. Following than the staff recommendation, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I don't see anything here about, I'm trying to read and listen at the same time, so bear with me.
That's okay. I put you on the spot.
The staff recommending that we move that building?
Staff's, yeah. Staff was recommending the two feet in and you're, if I understood your discussion, you were saying you were okay with not moving in.
That's correct. So.
So if you'll just state that, then that'll be motion, not, that'll be the motion.
Motion to approve without the, without the moving of the dormer, the two feet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Going with staff, approval with the exception of not moving the dormers in two feet. All right. Now we're up to the 24th Avenue.
I need just a second if I may. I apologize, I put my notes down and now cannot.
To podium.
Can you turn that back on?
It's also not on.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Sorry to keep you waiting. This is for new construction at 321 South 11th Street. And I apologize again, I don't have visuals for this either. We had two.
Yeah, this is, this is a cue.
Sorry. I had everything in order. We had two different presentations and I think that we may have gotten the two confused. So I don't have images for this one either.
Okay.
But this is for, but you have it in your packet. This is for new construction at 000 24th Avenue South that is, does not have an address yet. So this is the one that's right next to the one that you just approved. And it is 20, 26 feet tall. It meets the design guidelines in terms of the materials, the roof shape, the orientation, the proportion and rhythm of openings. So our recommendation is very simple. It staff recommends approval with the condition that staff provide final review of windows, doors, roof color, and location of utilities.
Applicant like to come before the commission?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. Mentioned unaddressed house is what we refer to as Lot C. Lot C looks, it's not next door to Lot A. There's a house in between it. Thankfully for Lot C, there's a four-square on 24th Avenue at the corner of Barton and 24th. Therefore, this house can be taller and have a different form than the one you just approved. So we went with a four-square form on this one because we knew that would be easy. So basically what we presented was a four-square that we sort of reviewed in terms of all the sort of requirements for the height, the width, and depth in hopes that we could, like I said, having a slightly different context with this one, get this one approved. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. And the developers here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on behalf of this project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Second? Okay. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries with staff recommendation. Okay.
All right. This one I do have images for.
The next one is 321 South 11th Street.
Thanks. Thanks for your patience. As those are coming up, I'll just go ahead and get started. This project is for new construction at the corner of 321 South 11th Avenue. It will be located where you see this fence, which is the middle image, with a historic residential building to the left and a church to the right that's across the side street. The project meets the design guidelines in terms of location, setback, height, scale, proportion, and rhythm of openings and the known materials. The most unusual part of the design is the roof form, which is an exaggerated cross-gable form. Staff viewed it as an interpretation of historic cross-gable forms in the neighborhood. The steep 12-12 pitch proposed is also found in the neighborhood. Staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions that staff review and approve the roof color, the window trim, porches, front basin, door materials, and specifications, and that it does meet the design guidelines, Section 2B of the Lachlan Springs design guidelines. And the applicant is not here, I don't believe.
Any questions to staff? Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf of this project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next one is 1608 Gartland Avenue.
1608 Gartland Avenue is an application to demolish a non-contributing structure and construct a new primary and accessory building. Because the existing structure is non-contributing to the historic character of the district, the demolition of that does meet the design guidelines. The new building will be one and a half stories tall with a side gabled roof. It will be about a half-story taller than the adjacent and the next closest historic houses, but the same height as several other houses on this street and as well as other blocks of Gartland Avenue. The width is also compatible. The house will be nearly centered left to right on the lot with the front setback about 10 feet deeper than the adjacent folk Victorian house to the left, but it is consistent with the majority of other historic houses on the street. Most craftsman-style houses have deeper setbacks. You can see roughly the rhythm of the street in that site plan. The materials of the new structure will be cement fiber, clabbered shingle, clabbered siding, shingle, roof, wood trim, split face block, foundation. These, those materials are compatible with the surrounding historic structures' materials. Roof shape, window, I'll go to the elevations while I say that. Roof shape, the window patterns are all appropriate as well. The, as I said, the application includes an accessory structure. The structure is one-story, two-car garage. It's located behind the house. The materials match those of the new building. The scale, location, and materials meet the design guidelines. The accessory structure is accessed from the rear, the alley to the rear with no driveway to the street. Staff recommends one thing that on your site plan, it doesn't show a concrete walkway from the front of the house to the street. Staff recommends that that be added. Summary, staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition of the non-contributing structure and the subsequent construction of a new primary building and accessory building with the condition that staff approve the windows and that a concrete walkway be added from the front of the house to the street.
Okay.
That was the fast version.
It was. Was any questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here?
There is an applicant here. If you have questions.
My name is Jamie Pfeffer. I live at 1123 Glenwood Avenue. I'm the architect for the project and I'm here to answer any questions, but we're in agreement with the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Open public hearing. Want to speak on behalf of this project? Closed public hearing. Discussion?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay. The next one is 228 Chapel Avenue.
All right. 222 Chapel Avenue is also an application to demolish a non-contributing structure and construct a new primary building. Again, the historic, or the existing structure is nonhistoric, non-contributing, so demolition meets the design guidelines. The new building will have two main components in the front facade, a two-story component to the right and a one-story wing to the left. The larger section to the right will be similar in height and width with surrounding historic structures and the, and shorter than a two-story, two-and-a-half-story structure across the street. The one-story side wing, which is not a massing element found on many other houses nearby, is, sorry, is felt to be appropriate given the unusual lot dimensions and its location at an unusual intersection, it's an intersection of Chapel and Benjamin Avenues which don't meet 90 degrees. It's a very odd angle. And as such, staff didn't find the massing of the structure to interrupt the rhythm of the street. There you can see that the front edge of the new building would be aligned with the adjacent historic house to the right, which is approximately five feet, five feet away, or 15 feet away, excuse me, across the property line. The siding of the building is compatible with surrounding context and is in keeping with the rhythm of spacing established by houses. of the street. There you can see that the front edge of the new building would be aligned with the adjacent historic house to the right, which is approximately five feet, five feet away, or 15 feet away, excuse me, across the property line. The siding of the building is compatible with surrounding context and is in keeping with the rhythm of spacing established by houses along Chapel, Chapel Avenue, which obviously breaks at the intersection. The proposed new structure would meet the minimum setback buffer requirements on the front and both sides, but would not meet the rear setback. You can see in the site plan that this lot is only 90 feet deep, front to back, which is about half the width of many of the other lots on the street. Therefore, a reduction of the rear setback from 20 feet to 10 feet for primary building is requested, which staff finds to be appropriate on, at this location. The materials of the new structure are compatible with those of surrounding historic houses and recently approved infill, including cement fiber board, batten, board and batten siding, split face concrete block, composite shingle roof. Additional information is needed on specific door and window types, as well as the color of the porch roof material, which is metal. And if any additional railings are required by code, staff would see those as well. The roof form, window pattern, orientation of the structure are all compatible and meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the application to demolish the non-contributing structure and construct a new primary building with the conditions that the color of the porch roof is approved by staff, that any front porch railings, should they be needed, be approved by staff, and that additional windows, additional information on the windows and doors is also approved by staff. With those conditions, staff finds the new building to meet the design guidelines for new construction in the Eastwood neighborhood conservation overlay.
Thank you. Is applicant here? Oh, yeah, you are.
Same information. I'm here to address any questions, issues that might come up.
Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf of this project?
I'll go ahead and introduce, but we did receive public comment on this, which was distributed by email from one of the neighbors.
Okay. Just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dan Lockery. I live in the house next door, the 226 Chapel. And my house was built in 1909. I've been there for 19 years. I have no problem with the demolition portion of this, or even the rear setback, or certainly less on the rear setback. I don't think, however, that staff recommendation is correct about the rhythm of the street. First of all, they're moving the house, the house that's there right now is quite small. It's maybe 1,000 square feet. They're moving the house five feet closer to mine, which puts it 10 feet away. I couldn't find any house that close to each other in my, in my run of houses, so I don't see how that keeps with the rhythm. The house on the other side of me is 18 feet away. And most of the, I think the smallest one I saw was 13 and 1/2. So this, what we're left with now is a 10-foot gap between the two structures. And of course, because that's on the tall side, it's also the tallest house on the street. Mine, mine is fairly tall, it's a, it's a story and a half. But, so that's right 10 feet away from my wall, which, which I find, because of the size of the structure, is, is problematic. There also, about the rhythm of the street, the other thing I had problems with is, it says the average houses, I'm quoting from, from your document, the surrounding houses from are 35 feet in width on average. This house is 52 feet wide. So 35 feet wide on average, and 52 feet to me, is not in keeping with the rhythm of the street. It's also 600-plus square feet larger than mine. Mine's one, mine's actually one of the larger, you know, of its type on the street. The height looks like it'll be at least as tall as everything on the street now. It's a two-story versus a one-and-a-half story, which most of them are. I also object to using the two-and-a-half-story four-square house across the street as a comparison, because it has a huge land space around it. It has at least 25 feet on each side of the house, which mean, which makes that large house stand by itself. It's the largest house on the block, and, and it isn't part of any rhythm, but it has a nice, large lot to house it. So my, my problem in general with this is if you, you're basically putting the widest, tallest house on, in the row, and, and making it the closest also to its neighbor. So to me, the size compared with how close it is to mine is, is a real problem.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on behalf of the project? Okay, closed public hearing. Any questions to staff or discussion?
In your, in your meetings with this applicant, I'm looking at the, the plan here. Can you explain to us, please, real, real quick, what's driving the placement of this new construction that is so close to the neighboring home? Because there, there is room against Benjamin Street, according to the plan. Now, I don't see contours or anything of that nature, but...
Yeah, I guess, Jamie, if you'd like to come back up and maybe address that?
Sure. We have an unusual proportion to this property as compared to other houses on the street. Before we began the design process, we came and met with staff, discussed sort of the, the unusual building envelope, ways to, ways to accommodate building, a structure within this envelope, and, and sort of different, different design approaches. We have, we have some, some trees along Benjamin Avenue, which, which helps explain why we're sort of shifting it, but we're keeping it within the building envelope. You know, we're not asking for an exception or anything outside of the, outside of the standard building envelope. Yeah, I think if you go down the street, I mean, if we, I have a map from Metro Mapping, I think we can see similar spacings that are in the 15, 10 to 15-foot range, standard setback. We, we discussed height and approaches to height with staff, and talked about the different precedents along the block. We tried to, we tried to bring the structure down on the edge as it turns the corner, as we deal with sort of the unusual nature of the lot, and because it is a, because it is a broader house, because of the narrowness of the lot, and the, and the larger-than-average width of the lot, we tried to use some proportion of massing to, to address sort of the, the width issues and to kind of bring that scale down and into the corner. And, you know, I mean, we tried to, we tried to approach it with the design process, with an ongoing conversation with staff, as, because we felt it was a unusual condition, and therefore it warranted extra discussion with staff and approach. And, and our solution, we're, we're very happy with the staff recommendations on it, and we're, we feel like the house is, you know, it's sort of that evolution of that conversation.
Jamie, can, can you, on the A11, on the property plan, the, the footprint shown on 226, is that a, is that your best, kind of best approximation based on, on available data, or is that a survey location? In other words, is the setbacks look similar in terms of, from the property line? Just curious, the, the level of accuracy you're able to discern?
This is not, this is not a survey. This is based on two things. We went to Metro Mapping, we took dimensions off of Metro Mapping, and then we also went into some of the, the satellite earth technology, compared that, you know, you, you sort of overlays and Photoshop to kind of line those things up.
Plus or minus two feet?
I mean, we're, we're in the ballpark.
Sure.
We're in the ballpark.
Sure.
I have a, I did sort of bring a printed version of the Metro Mapping with my CAD file overlaid on it, just to show that we're, we think we're pretty, pretty close.
Commissioner Champion, did you have?
Yes, I did. Jamie, real quick, please. With respect to the trees, I just want to get, be sure I understand what's going on on Benjamin Street. Can you try to explain to me how large of the trees you have out there?
I think there was a photograph.
Were there? If, if we go, if you see this photograph on the left-hand side, you can see there's a, a large tree. I'm sorry, my recollection's oak, but it's, there's a large tree on that corner. I understand. I can't really see the photo. This is good enough. This tells me all need to know. Thank you.
One second. Is there, I think there was another, was Ann, you had a question?
No, I, I was asking for that photograph, because I wanted to see where the trees were.
I do have a kind of a question. I'm going to sound really silly, but the current house now in this picture, and I know the neighbor was saying that it, it seems real much closer to him than evidently the current house. Is it the, this new construction, the same distance to the house, to his house? I think his concern, I was listening to his concern about the house being 10 foot from him. So I'm looking at the picture, and I'm looking at the new site plan here. It seems that it's about the same as what I'm hearing you also say to the plat.
We're...
Do I sound clear?
Sure. I, I think...
Is it nearer? Is the new construction nearer to the neighbor or the same?
We're, I, I think there's a, I believe it'll be slightly closer, I believe is the, the answer. It is, we're showing the edge of the new construction being six foot off of the property line, and that, and that dimension will be, that corner will be set by a surveyor when the foundation goes in. And so that's based on, that's based on moving it from, from the prescribed setback, and then giving ourselves space for the eve to remain within the building envelope. And that was sort of, that's sort of the, that's sort of the derivation of that.
Okay, thank you.
So will the eve be six feet or the corner of the building?
The corner of the building.
Okay. And do you think that, that current fence accurately portrays the, the property line? I know that sometimes it does, sometimes it really doesn't.
I, I mean, we, we think so at this, at this, at this point. I mean, we're, we're basing it on, I mean, what we've, what we've determined is it is fairly close, and we're not, we haven't moved it substantially closer to the existing house. I mean, it's, you know, when we, when we did our, when we looked at mapping and things like that, we're talking, we're talking a couple of feet. We're not talking a dramatic, a dramatic change.
When you set it to that same location, that's how it got into the drip line of the trees on Benjamin? Is that what happened?
We were just trying to, our concern, yes, was as, as the houses move to the left-hand elevation, getting into the drip line of the, of the trees. And also, because the property slopes back at the angle, you know, starts to, you know, let's see if we can... You know, as it, as it starts to, what we were concerned about when we talked with staff is we have the tree, and then we also have, you know, this, this Benjamin has a house, the next, the next house, the 1902 Benjamin Street, the adjacent property, is a front-facing house towards Benjamin. And so we were, you know, we're trying to address the, when you have the corner lot, you know, we have the front setback, with the rear setback, the side setback, but Benjamin is also in, in fact, a, a front setback, even though it's being, we sort of determined on our conversation that we sort of were talking about as a side setback. So it was both the drip line, and also trying to respond to Benjamin Street, which has front, you know, houses facing onto Benjamin Street. And so it was sort of to be sympathetic to both of those fronts. I mean, that was the, the derivation of our conversation, at least.
Okay.
I hate to, I hate to harp on the, the trees down Benjamin, but I have one more question. Do they run the length of this property? The, the magnolias that run down the side of the property along Benjamin, do they run the length? Or is there just a couple at the corner? From the picture I saw, I could, I could see the size of the trees, but I really couldn't tell. Can we give it to you? There's a, there's a, there's a large, there's a large tree in the left-hand corner. There is a, there's a hedge row between 1902 and 228 Chapel, and 1902 Benjamin. There's a hedge row, and there's another sort of planting along there. It's not, it's not like an array of trees running down like an avenue, if that's, if that's the intent of the question. Well, do you know, actually, is it just a row of trees? I mean, is it, do you know how many magnolias run down Benjamin? I'd just like to know.
I live there. I don't know of any magnolias, actually. There is a large tree on the corner, and it's in front of the structure that they would be building. So even if they moved it over, it's not going to get in the way of that particular tree. That's the largest of them, and I would be upset if they cut that one down. I mean, I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the tree issue. The, the row that he's talking about is office property. It's, it's back, it's actually owned by the house behind him, even though there is a row back there, it's not coming anywhere near to. He's got 10 feet in the back between the structure and the edge of the property. So that particular, they've cut down most of the ones on the Benjamin side. I'm not aware of anything large over there at this point. There were a few years ago, but I'm pretty sure this one on the corner is about the only large one there is. And the other thing, just about the side, I did, I did measure the distance between the current structure and my house, and it's some, it's about 15 feet, as opposed to what I saw would be like 10 feet. So to me, the move is, is significant. It's, you know, and it's a lot closer than what I have on the other side of me as well. So...
Thank you. To, question to staff, did, was, was that setback looked at a lot, how it was pushed across as far as, as you're, during your review? Is it something that you feel like you could review more, or?
Yes, that was taken into, into consideration. The, the standard lot width along Chapel is, is 50-foot lot with a street frontage, with houses ranging between 30, 30, 35, a couple actually that were 42 feet wide, that would be larger than, or wider than would meet current setbacks, but obviously they're historic houses. The adjacent house at 226 shows as being a 30-foot wide house, not including the two projecting box space. You can see one of them here. So the front elevation, I would estimate to have a 10-foot setback on either side, a 30-foot lot, 30-foot house and a 20-foot, sorry, 50-foot lot. So you have 10 feet on either side, with obviously the box base shortening that. So assuming that there's a 10-foot setback on that house and a six-foot on the other side, that's where staff got the number of 16 feet for this house, proposed house, which seems to be fairly close, if not even a little bit greater than the existing setback for the non-contributing structure.
Okay.
Sorry, I threw a bunch of numbers out there.
Threw a bunch of numbers. But basically, you set the, that five-foot setback is a, something that you, looking at all the, looking at all the others on the street, the, this was kind of, can't think of the word, but this, that's where you got it from? Maybe that's, that's how you were able to confirm it?
Yeah, it, I guess...
Proportion, that was the word I was looking for.
The rest of the lots on the street being fairly uniform in width, some variation in the houses, but the setbacks being a fairly consistent rhythm until you get to this one. But it's, this is 107 feet of street frontage, so it's more than twice the width at the But then, the, the lot turns such a sharp, sharp corner that the rear, it's a trapezoid lot, it's, it's not uniform width going down along Benjamin Street. Because it's an unusual lot shape, the rhythm of the street obviously has a natural break when it meets the intersection, and being such a shallow lot, if you, you know, with all the setbacks, you know, constraining the structure, it seemed like a reasonable, appropriate location.
I, I think that the, I think that the shape of the lot has a lot to do with the siding, and I, I get that. I think there's a second piece to it, though, is this, what looks almost like a side addition from the outset is also part of the problem, because if you visualize removing that, you could set the house in a different location that I think would fit the lot a little bit better. And I, I guess my question to Robin is, the side addition does look a little unusual to me, and it even sort of reminds me of the notorious umbilical duplexes a little bit. So I wonder, is this a design that we've approved before? And I understand that it's an unusually shaped lot, so maybe there's been exceptions, but this does, I keep looking at it, and I can't decide if there's something wrong.
We have approved side additions to lots that are extraordinarily wide, like this one. So if just the right portion was there, this would fit the requirements that we would have of a side addition. We thought that because of the odd shape of the lot, because it doesn't have the depth all the other lots has, that this was actually a very successful way to deal with that corner. As Mr. Pfeffer said, they're bringing that massing and that height down as it gets to the corner and you make that turn. So that's where we were coming from. We thought it was a fairly successful design in that way.
Quick question for the applicant, for the architect. Jamie, is it possible to get two to three feet towards Benjamin Street?
I mean, I, I'd be more than happy to, to look at it. I mean, I would be, I'm reluctant to say absolutely yes, just based on, there's a number of mitigating factors.
Understand.
I'd be more than happy to, to, to work with the surveyor and stake the corner and see if we can, and find two, two feet of tolerance.
I ask because, taking into consideration this odd-shaped lot... I ask because, yeah, taking into consideration this not-shaped lot, you know, well-crafted design here, um, and, and I think, you know, if, if the house weren't this wide, you know, if you could get 20 more feet on the lot, it, it might be more similar in form to the house directly adjacent. So trust me, I mean, I feel, I get that part, and, and so I think it responds to, to the side. I think, um, you know, the neighbor's concern in, in zoning being, uh, established to kind of preserve the rights of, of adjacent property owners to light and air and those types of things, I, I think if we could come as close as possible to, to, to the existing piece, being that we are going up an additional story, um, I, I think that might, um, be helpful, I, I think, all, all things considered.
I think that's a, I think it's a fair, it's a fair goal to, to look for.
So... It's a motion?
Is the public hearing still open?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with staff's recommendations, and additionally that, um, the applicant, um, stake the house and, and, uh, move it three feet towards Benjamin Street and to provide some additional relief to the adjacent, um, property owner and saving significant problems, can work with staff to, to, to work through, um, any changes that, that might be incurred from that. It'd be a total setback of nine feet? Based on the applicant's, uh, presentation here today, that would be a total setback of nine feet, yes?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries with the, um, the one change to the staff recommendation about the staff reviewing the setback with the architect. Okay, last is, um, it's actually a designation for 1622 Fifth Avenue and 612, 1612 Fourth Avenue.
Yes. This application is to provide historic landmark designation to the Warner House at 1612 Fourth Avenue North and Fair School located at 1622 Fifth Avenue North. Fair School was constructed in 1924 and it was one of the first six schools integrated into the September 1957, when Nashville Public Schools began what was then called the Stair-Step Plan. Four African-American children, two girls and two boys, attended class in 1957 amid white protesters. In 2011, Historic Nashville Inc. listed the property in the Nashville Nine's Most Endangered List. Fair School retains a great deal of architectural integrity and is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. The Warner House at 1612 Fourth Avenue, which is just behind the school, is also owned by Metro. J. H. Warner constructed this brick two-pen around 1865 and then a rear brickout was added prior to 1914. The property remained in the Warner family up until 1937. Staff suggests that the commission recommend to city council that Fair School and the Warner House be adopted as historic landmark, historic landmarks. Fair Middle School meets standard one because of its association with the Nashville Civil Rights Movement. Both buildings meet standards three and five because of their architectural style and integrity and because they are eligible for listing in the National Register.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, get a motion to approve? Oh, get a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there any other new business? Okay. Thank you very mu, much. Meeting adjourned.